Good evening and welcome to Canyon City Council on March 21st, 2022. We're glad to have everyone here. We'll go ahead and start our meeting with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy, absent. Councilmember Reed, absent. Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. Thank you. We're now very pleased to have Nelson Hoover from the Skyline Mennonite Church to come offer our invocation. Let's all rise, please.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to offer this prayer. Father, I thank you that you hear us when we pray. I thank you that you are all-powerful and you have full capacity to answer our requests. Thank you for this beautiful little town of Canyon City that you've allowed us to live in and to raise our families. I thank you for the men and women of the council here that are willing to serve our town in this way, and for those that are here to represent new opportunities and ways to better our community. Father, I pray for heavenly wisdom and good counsel to make wise decisions for the items on the agenda. May the people presenting present well so these council persons can make informed decisions. Father, we ask your blessing on this meeting, in Jesus' worthy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
For the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I do have someone here to speak with us on an item that is not on our agenda, and that is Dave Groeters. I'd like to invite you to come up to city council and introduce yourself, please, to the audience and to those watching online.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Dave Groeters, good evening, everybody. I'll begin and admit straightaway that I'm not in my wheelhouse here. I'm inexperienced in the world of building codes and equally so in requests to change them, but that's the purpose of my moment here before you. Additionally, I find it daunting to plunge into this task without you having the benefit of some background. So before making my appeal, I'll offer this barest sketch of the events that have kind of culminated to have me standing here before you for a moment. Five of us, friends from the Free Church, have long lamented that our church is frankly doing a poor job of coming alongside our young people who've made some commitment to Christ but who lack any idea of what living for Jesus Christ might look like as a single young adult. And the result of our failure, friends, has been painfully evident in the number of those 18- to 26-year-olds who have emancipated from their families, deconstructed their incipient faith, and now find that there's no one of mature faith to purposely come along beside them to help them sort of reconstruct and find their way again. It's caused a drain, and it's known, not just in our church family, but widely. A lot of people in that age demographic are just departing, never again to return. So the five of us have envisioned a way to entice some of them into a safeguarding, discipling relationship by the prospect of being able to rent a place of their own. And so it's that portable ADU, portable ADU, that has sort of emerged out of the melee of all of our analyzing costs and resources within the church and program objectives and city regulations. After all that has been taken into account, we've come up with that as a concept, and it seems to be a way forward for us. So we've nailed a ton of the issues that we anticipate, real and imagined, in the process of maturing this concept of a tiny home accessory dwelling discipling project. We lack for only one hurdle that isn't cleared and I guess must be if we're going to move forward, and that's the minimum size requirement. Currently, 350 square feet, we understand, for ADUs, and that would just render the project too costly. Building a structure that size would leave it impossibly immobile, I should say, and also too costly to build. So the church's leadership would have no way to embrace it and bring it within the sphere of its ministries and concerns for the young people who are emancipating in great number from our church, and as I said, not to be seen again. So we're asking for a variance that would be specific to portable ADUs, a sort of caveat to be created, if it could be, allowing them to be only 200 square feet, very, very tiny, and otherwise very mobile as well, and much more able to be replicated without great cost. And so within the wheelhouse of our church and its leadership. And obviously, we'd be open to any restrictive conditions that the council would deem appropriate for this new wrinkle, this new caveat, portable ADU, so to ensure that, you know, your monitoring and such, those responsibilities of accessory dwelling units could be managed, and the control over them as other requests might be imagined coming in, duplicating our effort. And I realize there's a Pandora's Box issue that has to be met. So that, in brief, is what I'm after, is a variance in that minimum square foot currently existing in the ADU documents, the packet.
So, Mr. Groeters, we've had a conversation before, and just for the council's benefit, for these 200-square-foot dwellings that would be at a person's home, it would be hooked up to water and sewer, right?
That's right. In every respect, we'd be working within the kind of confines of that policy, that program, as it's been developed so helpfully by the city. Black Hills Electric is integrant, and sewer, Fremont Sanitation, they've made allowance for a sort of a mobile concept with the payment of the tap fees. All the hurdles have been seemingly dealt with, save for this one. And that informational packet that Ms. Cindy was kind enough to put on your desk there, that will go into detail a bit more.
Okay.
The issues that I've just touched on.
So, Patrick, since you're here, can you enlighten us on what a process like that would be if the council were interested in making it a variance or an ability for the evangelical church to have 200-square-foot ADUs?
Well, there would be, I think you'd have two options. One would be a code amendment that would make it something anyone could do at that point if they met those criteria. The other would be a variance that would be processed on a case-by-case basis, and if you went that route, all variances per the city's municipal charter would go to the Board of Adjustment rather than the Planning Commission and City Council. Now, also bear in mind, the zoning code is only half of the problem. In fact, I'd say it's probably the smaller portion of the problem. You've still got building codes that are going to dictate that for a structure that's meant for human habitation, you're going to have minimum dimensions for rooms based upon the function of the room. So many square feet for a bedroom, so many square feet for a bathroom, so many square feet for a kitchen. And even though, right now, in the zoning code, an ADU can be as small as 300 square feet, when you begin adding all of those minimum room sizes up, you're usually pretty well in excess of that, to the range of 700, 800, 900 square feet.
Plainly not a structure that would work for a length of time, but for six months, a year, year and a half, as we envision, that's the sweet spot we had hoped to hit.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one follow-up question. Director Malgrady, do you recall why the minimum was set at 350 square feet? Is it simply because in the building code, once you add up all of those rooms, that's about what it would need to be?
I think there was some correlation between that. I don't know that there was an absolute assumption that the minimum size, based upon building codes you could have for an ADU, was 300 square feet. In a lot of cases, it's going to depend upon how the ADU was going to be constructed. So for instance, if someone is doing a building addition to a house, you can probably, at that point, start getting away with a slightly smaller configuration. If it's freestanding, you're going to have certain minimum room sizes and functions that you cannot otherwise do.
Of course.
Thank you. I know that we don't have the water department here tonight, but Administrator Stevens, I was wondering with regard to the water tap fees, is that something that there is a lot of cost every time that you move it?
Yeah, for ADUs, ADUs can connect to the existing water tap, so that they would connect to the existing housing water infrastructure.
So there isn't actually that much of a cost that's underlying that fee?
Not necessarily from a tap fee standpoint. The installation and hiring contractors to come out and do that, that's where the cost comes in.
Thank you.
Oh, do have Kim here.
I'm sorry, if I may speak, you also run the risk of, when you tap on with an ADU, you move yourself into the commercial tier. You're no longer considered a residential customer after that.
Thank you, Kim.
Sorry, regardless of the purpose of the ADU?
That's with regard to purpose.
Is that regardless of the purpose of the ADU? Yes. Yeah. Even if it's residential. Moves it into, just the billing moves into commercial tier instead of the residential tier. It has to do with how flows work and stuff like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think there might need to be a lot more conversations about this to move forward. If council's interested in pursuing it more, that's something that we can maybe set up another meeting with, with Mr. Groeters and his fellowship. Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, but really, it seems like the way that it would be possible to move forward, number one, we're not going to make any decisions tonight about, you know, is this permissible or is this not, because there are so many factors that come into play, the commercial aspect, if you have an ADU, things like that. So what really needs, would need to happen, I would guess, is that there would need to be someone to sit down with Mr. Groeters and get it down on paper exactly what would, what the changes that would be needed to be made to our codes and to our policies to make something like this work, because the, from, you know, what I'm hearing, there's several things that come into play. Sometimes they're interacting things, and so it'd be good to get all these down, make sure that we're, that we know what, you know, what exactly is being requested, what would need to be changed to honor a request such as this.
I would agree with that. I think on a, you know, if you're looking at making permanent changes, absolutely. As Patrick suggested, there may be another route of going the variance route if you want to try this out on a temporary or short-term basis.
It sounds like this is, this is really a solution for a few individuals, or I guess that wouldn't be families, in something like this, but a few individuals. Rather, what we're not looking at, you know, creating a 50, 100-unit complex or something like that. We're just talking about one unit at a time and maybe just a few of those, as I understand.
Yeah. I think, I mean, if we were to pursue the conversation, I think I would prefer that conversation to start at variances, just so we can start small, see how it goes, and, you know, if it's a sustainable and practical project, and then we can go from there before you go and start making permanent changes that are widespread. We do have some council members that would like to say something. I'll start with Councilmember Tracy.
I just, I think, just to add to what you said, Mayor, yeah, I think maybe some more creative thinking here might help, so that we're not just immediately looking at, well, what do we need to change in the code, but instead maybe looking at, are there differences from your side? Are there other ways to accomplish what you want to do? It just sounds like there needs to be a lot more conversation with staff about what's the best way to approach this, and maybe it's what you suggested, a temporary variance of some kind, or maybe it's some other approach. But personally, I wouldn't want to start with trying to figure out how to change code to try to make this work.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My only other thought, though, and I could be misremembering this, but I think when we were having the UDC conversations, there were some individuals who had expressed interest in having the ability to build smaller ADUs that were concerned about the 300 minimum square foot. So I guess if we are going to kind of look at this a little bit more broadly, I would want to make sure that we aren't looking at it as in, you know, just for this one individual instance, but, you know, if this is something that more people are interested in, I think that that would be helpful to know.
Yeah, and I agree with that, especially where if we have minimum room requirements that don't even allow for 300-square-foot minimum, because we have all these requirements. I mean, that's a conflict that we need to look into, because not everybody wants to have a 900-square-foot ADU in their backyard, but would like to have something maybe, you know, on the smaller side that would be reasonable for their property, which is the point for having some more affordable housing. So we're going to have some more conversations with Mr. Groeters.
Thank you so much.
And when we, Ryan, I guess we'll have you reach out, maybe set a meeting time with Mr. Groeters, and then invite council members to attend if they want. And if you are interested in this conversation, please let Ryan know. I think we'll have a maximum of two that can attend, so if that's something that you want, let him know, and we'll make it a priority for you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time and for what you're doing for our young people in our community. Do we have any council member announcements?
I just want to make sure I'm doing my part in communicating to the public that we will have a work session here tomorrow, Tuesday, March 22nd, 6:00 p.m., to discuss UTVs, and also Wednesday, we will be here at 5:00 discussing trails and usage of trails.
Thank you. Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks. Madam Mayor, just want to mention, as I think I have before a time or two, that the city's Energy Advisory Committee meets on second and fourth Mondays, so our next meeting is next Monday at 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall. The meetings are open to the public, and we, I think we get them on Zoom about all the time, too. So we're continuing to work on the very complex issue of electricity service to city residents and businesses. Welcome anybody's input into that.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually pressed my button, I think, at the same time as Councilmember Smith and had a similar intervention to make. I would just add, I guess, the nuance with regard to Wednesday's meeting. I think it's about the strategic vision that we have for trail usage and kind of individuals coming in from outside of our community who want to put on for-profit races, and how many we think our trails can bear, particularly with the local nonprofits that we have that are doing trails as well. So if you like to use our trails, I hope that you show up on Wednesday and kind of voice your opinion and your thoughts on how many races and how many events we should be having. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Administrator Stevens, can you please go over our consent agenda?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, item 6A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on March 7th, the special city council meeting for mural arts on March 2nd, and the general government meeting on March 9th. 6B awards extension bid 1621 for sodium chloride to Evoqua Water Technologies in an amount not to exceed 35,000. 6C awards bid 2322 networking security hardware to XByte Technologies in an amount not to exceed $159,044. 6D awards bid 2422 police annex remodel phase two to Jenkins Restoration in an amount not to exceed $244,610. 6E awards bid 2622 lawn and property maintenance to Yard Crafters not to exceed 35,000. 6F awards bid 3322 security cameras and access control. 6G ratifies the donation of surplus body armor. 6H is monthly budget summary, and the last item is cash dispersments and P-card dispersments.
Elijah, you are part of these bids. Do you want to come in and address council about some of these technological security cameras and software?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. The two items on the consent agenda that you'll see from me tonight regards with the cybersecurity initiative and physical security initiative for the city and the IT department. These two projects were identified as high priority last year during a budgeting phase for hardware and equipment replacement this year upcoming. They are budgeted as an American Recovery Plan Act expenditure. They do qualify as eligible expense under that for infrastructure improvement through technology and cybersecurity. So we wanted to take this opportunity to kind of jumpstart our cybersecurity initiatives and physical security initiatives citywide. Both of these projects would cover just about every building and area that the city has right now.
And part of that conversation, just for maybe the public's sake, is that the need for security cameras, it's just grown to that level
It has.
...of crime or having fires started at our historic red house at the museum, or nefarious activities at our public parks, and so having security cameras come into the point where we need that for our public safety and for potential prosecution if needed.
Absolutely. It would be a big help for the law enforcement folks to have that evidence from a security camera footage of some of those vandalism experiences, so.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Couple of questions for you, Elijah. One, on 6C, I was wondering if you could give us a little bit more of an explanation about the handwritten changes to the BidNet solicitation printout, in part because I know it's a lowest price technically acceptable bid, and the lowest price didn't win on this, so just wanted for the public record a little bit more explanation on that one.
Absolutely. So the bid tabulation that you have in front of you, there are handwritten remarks under the exceptions column. The platform through BidNet Direct, if a vendor submits any documentation with a bid and fills out their forms properly, it does not mark that they have any exceptions to the bid. When reviewing those bids that are submitted, you can discover items that are missing from your requested bid or substitutions that we would not want. So on that bid tabulation, I made those adjustments so that you could see which ones we treated as qualifying, if there were exceptions to those bids or not. Unfortunately, the two lowest bids did have exceptions. They did not include a portion of the requested bid, so.
Thanks so much for that explanation. I was also, I guess, a little disappointed or concerned with 6E, not 6C, I'm sorry, 6F. I understand that we only had one bid that was received through Sourcewell that this is allowable under our purchasing policy, but given the dollar amount of, I think, 300,000, it's a pretty high price to only have one bid to consider. So I'm curious as to your thoughts on that, why more companies didn't bid on it, and if there are more companies out there that might be interested. Thanks.
Absolutely. So the first part of that would be that we identified a platform or a security manufacturer that we wanted to unify all of our systems under. So they do not sell direct. You have to sell through a reseller. So that is the sole bidder that was on that item was a reseller of the manufacturer's hardware. The Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement is obviously, like you said, allowed under the purchasing policy, and we are supposed to be getting the best price for cooperative purchasing through state education and local governments. The big benefit for us as a department to have a sole partner such as that that has a state contract is we can actually work with somebody through design and implementation. So this is the same partner that we worked with last year during the first small portion of this phase. They're able to design a product that meets our required specifications and then competitively price what we decide we want based off of that Sourcewell contract.
So if I can add a little bit more context regarding Sourcewell. So Sourcewell is a state bid sourcer. So it was bid. It was bid at the state level, and this was the one vendor, the most competitive vendor that was selected at the state level, and that's that.
Ah, I see. So this was not actually bid out. The state had bid it out through Sourcewell. This is the vendor that was selected for the state contract.
Correct.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the clarification, and thank you so much, Elijah.
Sorry, I didn't explain that very well.
No, no, no. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you. This is a little bit off-topic, but Elijah, while we've got you here.
Yeah.
The, you know, as we all know, there's lots of developments overseas that have the potential to affect us, and Homeland Security right now is recommending that we, that all essentially municipalities, critical infrastructure providers, take a look at their security, and what they're recommending is multi-factor security for sign-ons and things like that. Is our Zimbra amenable to that? Can we set that up for two-factor?
That is something that I will look into in the near future. As it stands, the standalone email platform that we utilize does not have that capability, but there are some third-party plugins, security additions that we could make to look into that.
They're making that recommendation based on something that we don't see, but yeah, and the other thing that I would ask you while you're here, I've asked this question at the water treatment plant, and that they have told me that their system is not connected to the internet. Have you done an independent evaluation of that system up there to make sure that there's not connections to the wild internet that might be a backdoor for malware or malicious software?
There is an audit scheduled to happen both from our department and the water department in the next few months. That is not something that we have conducted to date, but it is on the books.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hammack, and thank you, Elijah.
Absolutely.
On the same subject of, it sounds like Russia and Ukraine, I did want to kind of spell out in a little bit more detail, item 6G, for those that may be listening or watching, that we have a number of expired safety equipments that our police department can no longer use based on standards for the United States, but they could still be life-saving. And so Canyon City Police Department has collected the following items and remitted them to the state of Colorado to be sent to Ukraine for the troops in Ukraine, and they sent 22 ballistic helmets, 16 tactical vests, six body armor vests, nine ballistic panels, and five trauma plates for that. And so we're really grateful that our CCPD quickly went to task to be a part of a life-saving effort for those in Ukraine that are suffering at this time. So thank you for being a part of that. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one additional question for Administrator Stevens. I know that we put together the 2022 budget and kind of the intended uses of ARPA before the final rule on ARPA funding came out, and we had a really rich and robust conversation at our council retreat in February about the use of ARPA funds now that we do know the final provisions and final regulations surrounding it. I'm a little bit concerned about a piecemeal approach of kind of approving some ARPA things while we still have a lot of, you know, while we still have a lot of, you know, bigger projects that are out there that we don't quite know the parameters around. So I'm wondering if it would be possible to get a better sense of the timeline from you on when we might know what the funding amounts for some of those larger projects might be and when we might be able to make those final prioritization decisions so that we aren't cutting off our nose despite our face by funding smaller things before we understand the larger context. Thank you.
Yeah, some of the larger projects, the water line for Reynolds, you know, we've budgeted a million from, just over a million from ARPA for that. The broadband RFP, that will be going out at the beginning of April, so we'll have a better understanding of what those numbers look like, you know, probably mid-May, once we start seeing those responses. You know, we talked about upgrading police radios and working to get some hard numbers on what those, what that will look like. But I think as far as the rest of the ARPA funds, the unused balance, we have some funds that are budgeted as unallocated funds for projects that do come up similar to the police radios. And as we work towards the 2023 budget, we can certainly work towards some of those other priorities like housing and other topics that have come up.
Do you think it might be possible to put this on a general government agenda for June or July, once you kind of have a little bit firmer numbers on broadband and...
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just had a question in regard to item 6D, the bid regarding the police annex remodel. Just wondered if City Administrator Stevens or anyone could provide just a little detail about what that project is going to entail?
Sure. We have Jim Johnson, our facilities director, here to answer some questions and can give you a overrun.
Great.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. We're going on phase two of the police annex remodel, so that's going to be for Suite B. It's 1,856 square feet. Most of it's going to be for training areas. We are allocating 539 square feet for CAC to expand their operations over there. It was budgeted $250,000 for this year. It came in just under that. We had two bids. One of them was 297, the other one came in at 222. So the local bidder did not get it on that, but we're hoping to get that all done this year, hopefully under budget.
Okay. Could you say again the square footage for the advocacy center, what that amount was?
We're adding 539 square feet of the 1,856 that is being remodeled. The 539 will be added to Suite C, which CAC now occupies.
In order to, you know, make sure that we can try and keep this project under budget, Jim's team has already done a lot of the demo work and stripping it down to, you know, bare bones so a contractor can come in and get to work straight away.
We did do in-house probably $70,000 worth of demolition work that helped with the bid considerably, so without that, we'd have never been able to do it this year with the budget numbers we have.
So I do have a question, because this did not say what was happening in this phase two, and so I definitely was not aware that we were expanding the CAC. But the CAC services the entire Fremont County, and are we getting funding from any other entities to help pay for this expansion?
So we're actually working on a lease extension for CAC, and they do have some grant funding. I don't know if we've included any of that in the...
They are going to supply some grant funding for furnishing, carpeting, some of the construction. CAC will be providing some grant funding with that that helped out with the budget. We've also, which will be coming before your next meeting, did the lease extension where they haven't been paying any lease or minimal. We've been letting them get started. So the six-year, the lease will go through 2028, and it goes up a few hundred dollars each time. At 27 and 28, I believe it goes up to 1,900 a month. It's a 1,500 a month now, goes to 1,700 for the middle three years, so we will be getting some money back on that from CAC as well. And that was part of the, the things that they needed to be able to get more grant opportunities. Since they don't own the building, most of the grants require that they have to have a long-term lease. So to make them better position to get these grants, we went with a seven-year lease, and that pretty well opens up to almost any grant opportunity that they might come across. So that's been a burden to them, being able to get some of the grant funds because they were on a short-term lease and don't own the building.
And just a clarification, on their lease payments, we did give them a period where there was no lease payment. I believe they did start at the beginning of this year making those payments.
They started January 1st, started making the 1,500.
Right, because, I mean, they're paying a lease towards the facility that they're renting from, which they went anywhere they go. But for the expansion, it just seems to me like an ask should have been made to the county and to Florence as well to participate in that expansion, because they utilize that facility just as much, if not more than we do. And it seems like that would be appropriate for them to be fair players in that. I don't want to start a habit of being the one that finances, something that needs funding from the entire county. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm a little surprised that we're charging them rent, especially of that amount, given the nature of the relationship that we have with them and the services that they provide. And I also, you know, thanks so much for mentioning about the grants and the need to have a long-term lease if you don't own the building. But I guess I'm just a little bit surprised by that and wondering kind of where those numbers came from and why...
I think when the police chief initially got them in there, that was the verbal agreement that they had with them, and it gave them time to get in and make sure it was going to be a good fit between their operation, our operation, and then it's kind of evolved from there. But it began as we let them in for the first year rent-free, and it has, you know, they are kind of expanding, growing, we're using them more. It's a really good, you know, symbiotic relationship between the police department, the city, and them, so it benefits us all. But the lease agreement, they do get funding through grants to lease the building, and that was actually, you know, something that they offered up, the lease payments, because they do get grant funding for it, so, you know...
It's an independent entity. And so they came, they came brand-new to Canyon City and asked, you know, for just a grace period to get onto their feet. And I think this is what Lori Jenkins, Jenkins had asked for, and really it was the county that was a really big partner in helping them get on their feet and provide some of the funding to make that happen, so.
So it seems to be working well, and hopefully we'll get this thing, this phase completed by fall, and the police will have, you know, more training space available. There's some office space in there, and then some exercise areas, so it'll be a good addition for the police department, be a really nice addition for that annex, you know, make sure that we're using all the square footage of it for useful purposes.
Madam Mayor, it might be appropriate just to give a brief history of the police annex building and how it came to be, because that's, it's, you know, we're already pretty well down the road with where we are and things we're doing there, but it wasn't this way five, 10 years ago. Want to do that, or you want...
Oh. Well, first, the CAC is the Children's Advocacy Center.
Correct.
Which is important to know that this is where if children are sexually abused, they go to get their exams and their interviews in one place, one-stop shop. And so it has really been a benefit to our family. I remember when Lori came here first, just introducing herself, that, you know, maybe they would start with 50, 75 interviews, and they do, I don't know how many they did this last year, but it was in the hundreds, probably. It is actually incredibly heartbreaking how much they have been used for, within this community. And so they are absolutely essential to have here, and we're grateful for the good partnership that they, and the collaboration that they have. And I do feel that the rent is probably a reasonable price and that it at least will help compensate for the expansion that we are providing on their behalf.
What I was thinking of is going back a little bit further for the whole building. The building was not...
The donation?
Yes, the building was not owned by the city. At one point, they were medical offices there, and those offices were donated to the city at no cost. There was no cost to the city, if I remember correctly. And the city determined that we could use that building for training purposes and for some law enforcement functions that reside in that building currently. And at the same time, this was all happening because it was from the beginning project. Lori Jenkins came, you know, and was looking for a home, and luckily we had one for her. And so that was, that was kind of the, where this all came from type thing. And anybody has other information or needs to correct me, please jump in.
We did receive the building for free of the property, which was a wonderful donation, and we're so grateful. But it has cost quite a bit of money, of taxpayer money, to renovate it, and this phase two is just, I mean, like I said, this is phase two. This is our second go-around of making those rehabs.
And this, it's been in the budget for a few years, but it, this was one of the projects that was cut because of COVID, not knowing what the revenues were going to do for the city. This project has been put on hold several times, and mentioned, you know, Jim's facilities team has done a lot of work in-house in order to try and save money, and make sure that we're moving forward every year with that project.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, are we ready to make a motion? Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Spend a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote, please.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, staff. Thank you for being here to answer our questions tonight. We sure appreciate that. Ryan Stevens, would you like to offer a report for us?
Absolutely. You have your, the written administrative report in your packets. Couple of things that are not in the administrator's report that I wanted to cover. Each council member, you have a letter in front of you. This is a letter of support. We will bring this forward to council to ratify if everybody's good with the letter. But our consultants who did the comprehensive plan, Howseel Levine, are nominating the comprehensive plan for the 100, our comprehensive plan for an award. And we have Patrick here, and you want to say a few words about that, Patrick?
Sure. So it's not just the comprehensive plan, it's also the UDC, since these were sort of partnered projects that were, had a high degree of interrelation between the two. The Colorado chapter of the American Planning Association holds its annual conference every year at the end of September, and they have just put out on their website that they are seeking nominations for planning projects and achievements that they think are worthy of awards. We and Howseel Levine think that this is an excellent candidate, because these kinds of projects are exactly what APA really wants to seek recognition for. And if they go by how long it's been since the community has gotten a previous award, I would think Canyon City should be fairly high on their list, because I don't think we've ever gotten an award from the APA.
So if there's a consensus, we'll go ahead and send this in so we can meet the deadline, and then we'll have it ratified at the next meeting. And, you know, that is probably another topic that we need to talk about at some point, which is the approval for letters of support and whether or not we should make some changes to resolutions, because we do get a lot of these, and they don't necessarily align with council schedules.
It is tricky, because we do get requests for letters of support, especially for grants, and for those outside entities seeking it, they don't realize that. Our process is it has to go before council for approval, which is often two weeks away, and I'll get a letter saying, hey, this is due by the end of the week. Can I get a letter? And it's always, it's hard to say, well, but, and oftentimes it doesn't work, so.
The next item that's not in the report, I mentioned the broadband RFP, and that will be going out early April and due by mid-May. We did have a meeting down here last week where we had a bunch of Fremont County stakeholders, the council of governments had a group called the Fremont Connect Group, where it was stakeholders and vendors. We sent out an invitation to those vendors to come and listen to what we're, what we have prepared and what we're trying to do, and we got a lot of really good feedback. So big kudos to both Rick and Elijah, who worked on putting that RFP together. We had a draft RFP there for them to review, looking for input. The input was, you know, there were a couple of good pointers, but for the most part, everybody thought that it was very comprehensive, and we should solicit some really good responses from it. So very excited to see that come out. And then the last item, we've received some feedback or questions about our sister-city status with Valdi, Russia. Councilwoman Tracy and I attended a meeting of the Fremont County Valdi, Russia Sister-City Program, and they have suspended all operations at this point, and they are working on some additional language that, and communications that they may want to put out in regards to that relationship and as well as their support for Ukraine. So just to give you an update on where that currently stands.
Thank you.
And would, a question, would that, so that will come back before council at some point, what the...
That is the intention, yes.
And that is a 30-year relationship that Canyon City has had with Valdi, Russia. And I know that our local chapter is heartbroken for the residents in Valdi, and they know that they're probably greatly suffering too, and this is not something that they would like to see happen. And it's really sad to see the progress that has been made for creating relationships, especially examples of democracy and how democracy works, or in a republic. So thank you, Ryan, very much. We appreciate that. And I do have a question for our attorney. I'm going to open the public hearing. Will we vote separately? So do I do the introduction A1 first, and then we'll vote on that, and then do introduce the second?
Yeah, the motion could be together, but if the motion fails, then you could do it each separately.
Oh, okay.
So you could motion to approve each together, or remove each from that.
Consolidation.
Yeah, consolidation. But you could also do them separately if that is more in line with what the voting will be.
Okay. Well, I would like to open this public hearing, and this is for item 8A. This is for the Four Mile Ranch Planning Area C5. Part one is the introduction adoption by title only of Resolution 4, series of 2022, entitled "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado Approving a Major Subdivision Plat on Certain Property Within the City of Canyon City." A2 is introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 5, series of 2022, entitled "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado Approving a Special Review Use Permit for Recreational Vehicle Park on Certain Property Within the City of Canyon City." I'll now turn the time to our city planner, Patrick Mulready.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This evening, we are here to consider two related requests for parcel located at the northwest corner of Four Mile Parkway and US Highway 50. This area is identified as Planning Area C5, Highway Commercial, under the Four Mile Ranch Plan Development District. This first request is to allow, is to follow up on an administratively-processed minor subdivision with a preliminary plat, the goal of which is to final plat the property as five lots for commercial use as a major subdivision. The second request is to approve a special review use that would allow an RV park on the largest of the lots being created within this five-lot subdivision. Subject property is a 51.91 acre parcel, as I said, located at the northwest corner of US Highway 50 and Four Mile Parkway at the easterly entrance to Canyon City. of US Highway 50 and Four Mile Parkway at the easterly entrance to Canyon City. The property is currently undeveloped and unimproved. Utilities exist within County Road 123 north of the site, but will have to be extended in order to serve the property. The site has a varied terrain with a high point near the western boundary of the property, where it abuts designated open space. It experiences a downgrade as it proceeds east and extreme downgrades to the south, where it abuts US Highway 50. The property has a commercial designation under the Four Mile Ranch Plan Development District, and it's identified as Planning Area C5. As I said, this is the first attempt to develop this property since it was annexed into the city as part of Four Mile Ranch. In late 2021, the applicant applied for a minor subdivision to plat this property into one large parcel in order to facilitate the sale of the property from Sun Canyon to Sun and Shine Financial. This is permitted for planning areas within planned development districts under the city's Unified Development Code. That minor subdivision, which will include the dedication of the Four Mile Parkway area between Highway 50 and County Road 123 to the city, will be recorded as part of a three-party coordination on closing from Sun Capital to Sun and Shine to the eventual end-users of three of the lots. With this application, the subdivision proposal is to take the one large platted parcel and re-subdivide it into five lots with an internal roadway providing internal access to all lots. There will be no proposed access from any lot directly to US Highway 50, nor do I think CDOT would likely allow such an access. Utility mains exist to serve this site from County Road 123 to the north, routed into the site via the Four Mile Parkway. Electricity and natural gas are also available to serve the site, but will need to be extended into the site for different locations. Because of the plan to utilize both Four Mile Parkway and the new internal street being called Dock Holiday Drive for water and sanitary sewer, the city has required the applicant to dedicate both roads as public streets rather than keep them private with a series of utility easements which can conflict with one another. So, the, the idea is that this section of Four Mile Parkway will finally be dedicated to the city since it has never been dedicated previously. Now, based upon the consultations between the applicant and the city's engineering staff, the city has agreed that each lot will manage its own drainage and stormwater runoff based upon impervious surface via detention ponds to be constructed as each lot goes under construction. Under the Four Mile Ranch Development Guide, commercial parcels default, I'm sorry, commercial parcels do not require a minimum lot size under the, the Four Mile Ranch PDD, so there is no conflict with the dimensions of the lots as shown. Now, three of the lots that are intended for this subdivision already have potential end-users. Lot 1 is identified as the location of an RV park, Lot 2 is the location of a potential hotel, and Lot 5 is the location of a proposed Love's Travel Plaza. Now, if the, if the Four Mile Ranch Planning Area C5 preliminary plat is approved, the next step for the applicant would be the submittal of a final plat, which would include cost estimates for the public improvements the city will eventually own and maintain. Each lot within the filing will also be required to submit a site plan so that parking, landscaping, site lighting, pedestrian circulation, and details for building mass such as building materials and colors, height, placement on site, et cetera, can be evaluated. And when evaluated against the eight criteria for the preliminary plan, as shown in the staff report, staff has found that this proposed commercial subdivision is acceptable and can be considered for approval. Under the Four Mile Ranch Plan Development District Guide, commercial land use areas, as I said, the Lot 1 is being designated as a Love's RV Park, which would require a special review use under the Four Mile Ranch PDD. Now, under those regulations, the RV park has to meet three criteria which are identified in the staff report. Lot 1 at the northeast corner of the proposed subdivision for this use, as proposed, the RV park would be set on the largest of the five lots within the subdivision. Lot 1, which is proposed, would be 22.51 acres in area. It is proposed to contain 124 recreational vehicle parking spaces arranged into rows, all of which come equipped with the ability to connect to utilities. The site has two points of access, a full movement onto Dock Holiday Drive and an exit-only access at the northeast corner of the site along Four Mile Parkway. In addition, for security reasons, there will be gated entrance, a gated entrance and two gated exits internal to the site. These access and egress points are part of a planned internal circulation system designed to be wide enough to facilitate turning movements for recreational vehicles, even if towing something. The site will have a large amount of impervious surface, which means managing detention on the site will be important. The site will have two detention ponds, the largest of which will be a 0.25 acre parcel located at the northerly boundary of the site. The second is a much small, is much smaller and located near the intersection Four Mile Parkway and Dock Holiday Drive. The proposed RV park offers more than simple parking for large recreational vehicles and includes amenities around an entire guest experience, intending to make guests feel like part of the, a resort community. Some of those amenities include bulk propane sales, fire pits and grills, pavilions for outdoor gathering, a dog park, general store, laundry facilities, shower facilities, available guest Wi-Fi, recreational facilities such as pickleball and basketball courts, and a children's playground with a splash pad. And it should not be forgotten that this resort community has also established a perimeter fencing for guest safety and security. Although this project was submitted for the city, for the city's reinstated criteria before, the city's reinstated criteria for RV parks, this proposal meets most of those requirements under the, the criteria that we adopted recently already. And when evaluated against the three criteria specifically for special use review approvals, staff finds that this proposal is acceptable and can be considered for approval. At the public hearing before Planning Commission, which was conducted March 2, 2022, one future resident of Four Mile Ranch asked what was to prevent large motorhomes from entering residential streets in Four Mile. If you've ever seen one of these 40-foot motorhomes, you're very unlikely to want to take it into residential areas you are unfamiliar with because backing these things up if you run into a dead end is a very difficult proposition. So, our understanding of the mentality of most motorhome owners is they only want to stick to roads where they're quite familiar and their nav systems are quite familiar with how to get into and out of with a minimum amount of fuss. A phone call inquired, a phone call after the Planning Commission hearing inquired about a hypothetical situation, that of what happens if an RV owner traveled the length of County Road 123 and somehow ended up blocking the intersection of County Road 123, Four Mile Lane, and Highway 50 where all three of those streets come together. While that is potentially a possibility as a short-term situation, that light cycles fairly regularly, and any blockages tend to get cleared up immediately upon the next green light cycle for Four Mile Road and, I believe it's Mackenzie Avenue going in the other direction. So, Kim is here, she can probably speak a bit more to that, but I'm not certain that there's a high probability of that blocked access actually becoming an issue. Now, in terms of a recommendation, staff and the Planning Commission recommend that the city council approve the five-lot preliminary plan proposal for Four Mile Ranch Planning Area C5 with the adoption of Resolution 4, series of 2024 by title in your agenda packets. Staff and the Planning Commission also recommend that city council approve the special review use for an RV park on Lot 1A of the five-lot commercial subdivision at Four Mile Ranch Planning Area C5 with the adoption of Resolution 5, series of 2022. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that city council may have. Also present to speak on behalf of this project is Rob Brown representing the Fremont Economic Development Corporation.
Rob, why don't you go ahead and come up and address city council about the project?
Rob Brown, Fremont Economic Development Corporation, 402 Valley Road, Canyon City, Colorado. Thank you very much, council, for the opportunity to present tonight. I presented last to council in December, so many of you are new faces, so I just thought I'd do a brief introduction so you knew who I am and why I'm here and the kind of stuff that, that we do at Fremont Economic Development Corporation. We're a, a private, not-for-profit, membership-driven organization, the city of Canyon City is one of our members. We wake up every morning with the intent to improve the economic condition in Fremont County and specifically Canyon City in this case. We're very proud of that fact, we've been doing that for over four years, and that's kind of our, our mission. In reference to this project specifically, many projects have lots of moving pieces, and when you have that circumstance, it requires some additional boots on the ground or people that can help right here in the community. So FEDC has formed what we call our Rapid Response Team, which is a button on our website, and you press that button, and we are activated and we come to, to help with these types of projects. In this specific project, you've got an owner that's in Toronto, Canada, you have a developer that is in Chicago, Illinois, you have an end-user that is in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. So as you can imagine, it is a very complex project to start with, and then having the lack of representation here is a problem, so they've secured a relationship with FEDC to perform that function on their behalf. So, the, the end-user, as I mentioned, is Love's. Now, at FEDC, we have the habit of code-naming our projects, and this project was announced on February the 14th, Valentine's Day of 2021, and we called it Project Cupid. And then the double entendre, you can see now that the end-user is Love's, so we, I thought we covered all bases with Project Cupid. In fact, we recommended that the interior street be called Cupid Drive, but saner heads prevailed, and now it's Dock Holiday Drive. So, in reference to Love's, this is the type of partner that a community specifically benefits from or longs to have on their team, and we're very fortunate to have that situation. Now, city of Canyon City is proudly celebrating our 150th anniversary this year, and I can say that as a very little boy, I was present for our 100th celebration. So, my point being is that I'm not just a representative for the project, I'm a proud Canyon City native, I grew up here, and when I look at a project, I'm vetting them not just as a business opportunity, but how I feel like they would integrate with the community, and I think Love's is a great opportunity to bring them in. Founded in 1964, so they've been doing this for a while, in Watonga, Oklahoma. Three generations of people in the Love's family are operating this business currently. Tom Love, the person that founded this in 1964, attended the abbey during summer, for the summer school and the Indian lore programs and so forth. So he's got a longstanding interest in our community and was very interested in having one of his projects here. They're currently ranked as 16 for privately-held American companies on Forbes List. So this is an organization that has the capacity and the ability to perform, and they are ready to start their construction at the earliest moment possible. So this isn't a situation where we have to worry about funding or worry about the credit worthiness of the candidate, these guys know what they're doing and they're very capable. They've got over 25,000 employees nationwide, so this is a significant organization. You've heard many of their platforms like Love's, Gemini, Musket, Trillium, Speedco, many, many different business units under their main umbrella, and they have over 530 travel stops nationwide, 41 different states represented, and they're making a significant investment in Colorado right now, and you'll be seeing Love's popping up all over southern Colorado. 300-plus tire care centers, 200-plus Speedcos, which are medium-duty and heavy-duty maintenance facilities, 18 hotels, and fortunately for Fremont County and for Canyon City, they have entered into the RV business as well. And so this platform will be their premier product, their flagship product, their entry into significant RV operations. They've done smaller ones in conjunction with their travel plazas, but this property, this location, this community, this opportunity is going to be one of their most significant efforts to date. So we'll be the proud owner of, of the first one of these. Tom Love, when, when you talk to him, you get the opportunity to understand that he is a value-driven individual, he builds his team around him. With that in mind, he supports his employees, this is a guy that's going to be a great partner, and the team will be a great partner. His son, Greg Love, has been here many times, we've had the opportunity to show him around the community, and he's, he is clearly the type of partner that we want to have. Let me give you some background on the community involvement. Over the last 21 years, Love's has raised $33 million for the Children's Miracle Network. They're putting their money where their mouth is, they're supporting communities. In 2018 alone, they gave $5 million to not, not-for-profits. Where, where they like to shine is in situations where there are natural disasters. Because of their broad footprint, many of their areas have been exposed to, you know, tornadoes and floods and fires, and they make an investment in those communities by donating money to the cause. When they open every store, they, they give $2,000 to a local not-for-profit, and they give that individual location a budget so they can help locally. How it's going to impact Canyon City is very simple, money from the utility fees, right? These are going to be a significant player in our utilities, they're going to be a, a great customer for us. They're going to improve the utilities to the site, that's going to benefit their specific project, but it's going to benefit that entire area, they're going to pay for that infrastructure to bring it in and make that whole area really start to take off. But the one thing that I personally feel the most passionate about is that they desire to capture that business that they believe is driving through Canyon City on, on down Highway 50 to other places, and I think they're exactly right. We, as Canyon City citizens, we pay for those, that infrastructure, we pay for the wear and tear on our roads and so forth, but we don't benefit because they don't stop. This facility is going to give that, that traveler the encouragement, the facility, the ability to get their unit off the road in a very welcoming fashion and be able to have their vehicle taken care of or actually make that investment in a, a multi-night stay. And then finally, when you look at a project, for the travel plaza alone, you're talking about a 10 to $15 million investment for that particular product, and the RV center will be significantly more, so they're going to become a significant taxpayer compared to what is happening there with the vacant land right now. So I think we've got a great opportunity there going forward. A final point that I want to make, 25 to 30 new jobs, okay, and FEDC is all about jobs, but, you know, you're going to have three to five managerial positions, but 75% of those people that they hire are going to be full-time employees, 25% will be part-time, those are both good numbers. But in all cases, all employees for Love's are offered a full benefit package, and that's just not something that happens in other places. And if you want to get on a career path, you do so with a large company like Love's that can take people in and promote from within and create opportunities for people here in our community that want to, you know, get on that, that road to success. So, Love's is going to be a great partner. We've spent a lot of time working together, they've done a full engineering package, they have no desire to cut any corners, they've, they've met every task that the city has presented them with, with complete acceptance. So, it's a great organization, FEDC can confidently give them, give them our recommendation, and we want to see if we can push this project forward with your approval. So, available for any questions.
Councilmember Stein.
Thank you for that presentation. I was present when you did a presentation last year, before I was on council, for the abbey?
Yes.
And unless I'm mistaken, aren't, wasn't Sun and Shine part of the financial services there also?
Yes, yeah, that's very intuitive of you, yes, that is correct. Sun and Shine has made two major project commitments to our area, the Abbey project, which we call Project Message internally, and this particular project, Project Cupid. So they are the same people on both projects. From Sun and Shine's point of view, this project is a smaller project, it's going to happen more quickly, and when they make an investment in a community, they like to do multiple projects at the same time to create, you know, a critical mass. And so this is the opportunity to get that project moving, and you're going to see my shining face in the not-too-distant future asking you for approval on the major subdivision for the abbey property as well. So, yes, same people.
And, well, I just, and thank you for that, and I just, I just wondered if they did have an overall plan for investments in Canyon City? I mean, is that, is that something that's ongoing, or is it just the abbey and this Love's project?
Sun and Shine is a family-owned organization, primarily a man and his sons that, that own Sun and Shine. They're at a specific point in their lives and careers where they're looking for legacy projects. They, they have the ability to make money, probably more money, in money in major metropolitan areas. But they found Fremont County and they found Canyon City as, as an interesting place to make an investment where they believe that they can leave a legacy. So they can create something that generations going forward are going to value. And so that is exactly why they're here. The Abbey is, is a once-in-a-lifetime project. It's going to take years and years to complete that project. So they will do other smaller projects in conjunction with that as they, you know, mobilize their teams and, and move into our area.
Thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Smith.
Well, first of all, what happened to Rob Brown Drive?
Yeah, right. What, what were we thinking? People would probably spell it wrong.
This one's for Patrick. I, I remember there being like a metro district or something with water in the Four Mile area. Has that all been in consideration?
Yes. We've, we've had a number of conversations with the applicant about the financing of potential infrastructure improvements that are going to happen out there. Ryan probably knows a bit more about this than I do because I don't generally get to dabble a whole lot in, in metro districts. But my understanding is there were four metro districts that were initially established with Four Mile Ranch. And then at this point, I think only one of them is servicing debt associated with the residential development that's happened out there. So there is another one that will cover these commercial areas. And in fact, the commercial zoning extends up Four Mile Parkway all the way to County Road 123. So there's a big C4 community commercial area just north of this site.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks. I, I submitted a few questions to City Administrator Stevens and Planner Patrick Mulready over the weekend and did get a response from our Public Works Director, Kim. Appreciate that. But I thought it would be good maybe to go over the questions that I submitted so that they would be part of the public hearing, the questions and, and responses, if that's okay. Should I just go ahead and go through the list? My first question was in regard to Four Mile Parkway, just what the process was and the timing. And I think, Patrick, you addressed this at least to some extent, the process and timing for when that would be dedicated as a city public right-of-way. If you could just say a little bit more about when and how that happens.
Certainly. So, so there are currently two plats. One is preceding the other because it has to precede the other. The, the first one is the minor subdivision that's creating the one large lot for the sale and transfer of the bulk of this property. It's also going to contain the right-of-way for Four Mile Parkway, which the city will then accept, which the applicant will then, as part of the public improvements they make with this, will also improve Four Mile Parkway and upgrade it. The second plat is the one that you're seeing here tonight. That's the one that's creating the five lots here. So we will be getting, and, and part of the difficulty is the one plat must precede the other. And because we're dealing with three parties for a closing, it's a bit of a complicated interrelation between them as to when the first one closes. And we note that on certain points in the resolution that you have before you as to what the reception number for that closing is. So that when that, that resolution gets recorded, it reflects the, the reception number of the first plat. And then the second plat would move forward as a final plat.
Okay, thanks. And while we're talking about roads, then just so that I'm clear, I don't know that I put this in my written questions, but Doc Holliday Drive, is it drive or road or?
It's, it's Doc Holliday Drive is what they're calling it.
Okay. And that's also going to be a city right-of-way. Is that correct?
Correct. If they didn't dedicate Four Mile Parkway, you'd end up with a situation where you'd have Doc Holliday basically as this sort of orphan right-of-way that's not connected to any other right-of-way. That's not desirable. So it made sense, all right, we've, we've been getting complaints about the condition of Four Mile Parkway for the better part of 20 years. Why don't we just bring it into the city? They can improve it and then we can begin maintaining it and, and taking care of, you know, maintenance long-term.
And so what will the, the width or do we know yet of the Doc Holliday right-of-way and the cul-de-sac at the end? I, I'm just picturing these big rigs that were mentioned a little while ago. Just, I, I assume we will ensure that there will be enough space.
They, they will have to meet our roadway standards. And I believe Kim Swearingen can tell you what those are for, for commercial local.
During the vetting process, we did determine that that was going to be a, I believe it's a 40, a 40-foot wide right-of-way. It is going to be curb and gutter. It'll be urbanized. We also had them do auto turn, which is the, excuse me, Kim Swearingen, Public Works Director, I apologize. But they will be, I mean, we had them do auto turn and those various requirements for the traffic impact study. So all the curb radii and et cetera will be able to handle the vehicles that will be turning around and making turns in that development.
Okay, great. Thanks. I did have question or questions too about Lot 1 and the RV park. And I understand that we didn't have the RV park regulations in place when this application came in. It, it appears from the drawings that it's going to be fairly dense. And so that drives traffic. It drives water use. It drives perhaps drainage issues. I guess one of my specific questions is, in that lot with that proposed RV park, how, do we know what percentage of that is going to be pavement, the impervious part? Or do we know that yet?
I can't tell you specifically on what it is at this moment, but I can look that up for you. But for sure, it's mostly impervious surface. And that is because it has to be, you know, drivable. I did talk with the engineer about making some of the driveways less pervious. Unfortunately, because of the weights of the vehicles and stuff, they were not able to accommodate that. We do obviously see some green space in, within the development. And then we also have some, if you see on the edges, we have some travel. It's basically water travel spaces. So that when the water travels off and it makes its way to those detention ponds, it does deal with some water quality issues. So we have taken those things into consideration.
Okay. And you feel as if the, the areas designated for the detention ponds are sufficient then for?
Yes, ma'am.
For that, even with all the paving that needs to be done?
Yes, ma'am. And because of Colorado law, we have to release the water. So, I mean, we have to release the water within 72 hours. So they're only allowed to be sized so, you know, so big. So, I mean, basically what we, we make sure of is it's, first of all, we're slowing down the water. That's what we, we're mandated to do. We have to slow it down. We also have to make sure that the volume is small enough that it doesn't impact downstream flooding issues as well as water quality. Those are the three main things that we have to think about when we're talking about detention. And these two detention ponds, and the reason they are split is because of the way the land works.
Gotcha. Thanks. And I, I wondered too, I, I know in, in some of the information that we got before the council meeting, and I may have read it wrong. I, I thought it was saying that the water main didn't have to be increased to 12 inches until the hotel was developed. But I understand from your response that that's being increased from the beginning. Is that right?
Correct. Yes. We would, we would not require them to put in a smaller main and then require them to upsize. That's why it's going to be a 12-inch from the start. Correct.
So we don't anticipate that ultimately with, if, if the RV park is this dense and if the hotel develops, we feel that's going to be sufficient?
Yes. In fact, when we talked to the engineer during the review process, he thought that the model showed that, well, he, he supposed that the model showed that an eight-inch was sufficient for the entire development. But us from a water, you know, quality standpoint and other kinds of concerns, we thought that the 12 was more appropriate. So we requested that they increase it to the 12-inch.
I guess I should ask too, and I didn't have this in my written questions, but do we currently pump water to this part of our annexed part of the city?
We do. Yes, there is a pump station.
And does this impact that? Is, do we have to do more of that?
No, it's, it's a part of that initial plan for that development. Of course, we know that there is a tank that is supposed to be up there at some time in the future. But this, this development does not impact that. It is below the, the required elevation.
Okay, let me see. I think I had maybe, well, I just, I did have just some general concerns about the density of the RV park. And I don't know that we have any tools to address that. It kind of sounds like we don't. And that we've looked at it even in light of the later adopted RV park requirements and that we think that it fits pretty well with that. So I'll just leave it at that. I, my, let me see if I had another que, I think the only other question I had was, there was reference in your materials, Patrick, to the Four Mile Ranch Development Guide. And I didn't know if there was any part of that document that council members needed to know more about what was in that historical document.
We, we can certainly get you a copy. That, that was supposed to have been part of what you got after you were elected, part of your informational pack. And if, if that was not made, I can certainly take.
Could be there somewhere.
Basically, these are the, it, it's, it's set up so that it's got some design goals that it wants these various areas within Four Mile Ranch to achieve. And then it begins getting into the regulatory areas concerning use and setback requirements principally for the residential, but there's also information about there for the non-residential.
There's also engineering information in there. And that's kind of what I alluded to in the email to you this, today, is that some of that engineering information is outdated and that's stuff that we have to keep in consideration. Thankfully, the way our municipal code reads that I have kind of the authority to make changes should be necessary based on, you know, current engineering principles. I mean, we're, we're covered when it comes to that. That's why we request all those extra reports.
Got it. Great. Thanks. I appreciate it. And I think that answered my questions. Thanks.
Big thick document too. Big thick document.
Kim, while you're up there, would you like to make a comment on the phone call that was made to the Planning Department after the Planning Commission's meeting about potential traffic blockage at 123 and Highway 50?
Yeah. So we did not have them evaluate that intersection because we didn't, we didn't even consider it as a part of being something that was going to be influenced by the, this particular development. I mean, people come in and out of Four Mile Ranch with RVs and trailers and stuff like that every day. I mean, they storm out their homes. So that was not something that we even considered as being a volume issue. We only considered the intersection at Highway 50 and the intersection at County Road, at 123 and Four Mile Parkway. We did not even consider this other intersection that is, you know, a couple of miles away. I would think, you know, anything that's going to happen there is already happening there. I mean, like I said, with people that already have those 40-foot motorhomes or those 29-foot trailers are coming in and out of there. I mean, we have, we have folks that are coming in and out of there with farm trailers. So.
There, there's a propane sales facility not, not far from them.
Yeah, I, I really don't.
And those trucks use that intersection all the time.
I really don't see an issue from this development being a problem at that intersection. I mean, it is a fairly wide intersection where the three roads come together. I can't imagine that we would have trouble with, you know, an extra-long vehicle that we weren't already, already seeing today.
Well, there's also a storage unit, which I'm sure you've got budget trucks going in and out, moving trucks.
Exactly.
Well, and just as another, another point of reference, Florence now has two RV parks. One is straight on, you know, downtown on Highway 67. At our last mayor's roundtable meeting Florence's mayor, Villa Grana, they are just absolutely tickled with the RV parks that are within their city limits. It's been a real boost to their economy and they love their visitors. It's been a high-quality asset to them. And they haven't men, they didn't mention any downsides. I did, I mean, I've only heard it from their perspective, but it didn't sound like there, there have been very many complaints from their citizens about it.
And to just jump in on the intersection question, if that, if that's a concern, a real simple solution for that is on the exit-only to the RV park, say Highway 50 that-a-way, that'll take care of a lot of the, a lot of that.
Yeah. And I, I can't imagine that they're going to try to turn left there anyway. I mean, that was actually something that we discussed with the engineers, you know, possible left turns out. And it, they, they've made it to where, you know, it's, what we call engineering controls, you know, where we make, you know, radii bigger on one side. It kind of entices people psychologically to go a particular way. So we, we do, we do think of those things.
Thank you. And Councilmember Stein.
I have a question for Kim. On the detention ponds, are they designed for the water to go out immediately? Just drain right through them? Or are you going to have a gate or something to slow it?
No, no, no. They, they have what's called an outlet structure. And without getting too technical, it's, it's got several orifices that allow it for different types of storms and, you know, for various water quality and flows and stuff. So we'll have an outlet structure.
Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks so much for the presentations, Rob and Patrick. Those were really, really helpful. I just have a couple of additional questions actually following up on some questions that my fellow council members had. With regard to the intersection in question, are we receiving complaints right now about current issues with it?
The, the intersection of McKenzie and Highway 50? No, we are not.
Okay. And then secondly, Patrick, I believe you mentioned that before Four Mile Parkway was given to the city, that it would have to be improved. And then we would be responsible for maintenance of it. And I just wanted to, to check my under, that my understanding was correct on that.
That is correct. And we will probably put together a subdivision improvement agreement that will clarify this. What normally happens in situations like this is, okay, the right-of-way can get dedicated to the city. The city has, as part of that agreement, an understanding with the developer that we will not officially accept ownership and maintenance until it's been approved to our specifications and it's been inspected and passed that inspection. And then there's usually a couple of year warranty period where any issues, defects in construction or whatnot are addressed. And at the end of that warranty period is when we formally accept the, the road for ownership and maintenance.
Okay. Thank you. Director Sprangton, did you have something additional?
I was just going to add that I, I don't want you to expect that the road is going to look beautiful and pristine as soon as this development comes in because it's a lot more complicated than that. It will see, you will see it in phases.
Sure. I was also wondering with regard to the other public comment that happened at Planning Commission, given that we aren't allowed to watch Planning Commission, I was hoping, hoping that you could give a little bit additional flavor or color to that comment?
So as, as the gentleman who introduced himself said that he has a home that's currently under construction, I think he said it was on Telegraph Trail. So that's the, the road that's going to the Four Mile Ranch Golf Clubhouse. So he's not actually residing there yet. The home is still, still being built. And his concern was that if, if an RV park is built right there at that corner, we're going to see an increase in the number of recreational vehicles that are going through the neighborhood. I don't know that there's anything prohibiting recreational vehicles from going through neighborhood streets in Four Mile Ranch now. And I don't know that putting an RV park at that location, because they are so close to Highway 50, you're going to see a lot of people being enticed to make a left turn out of that RV park and go up into Four Mile Ranch. There are a lot of dead-end streets in Four Mile Ranch right now. And as I said, most drivers of 40-foot mobile homes or, or motorhomes, they do not relish the prospect of having to do a long stretch of driving in reverse because those are very difficult to see the back end of when you're reversing. So I, I don't know that it's a problem now, and I'm not convinced it will be a problem if the RV park goes in.
Maybe there's a destination there.
I'm sorry.
I was saying, if there was a destination for them, that would, I could see that. But there really isn't.
And as Director Sprangton mis- mentioned, perhaps also signage or those engineering controls would also help mitigate or alleviate, alleviate that concern. Three other really quick things hopefully. One, I was curious about the timeline for the project, when, when it would actually be coming.
Yeah, they, the, the user would like to start as soon as possible. And I think at the Planning Commission, which you didn't hear fortunately, but I'll repeat it anyways, is that they said they were, they wanted to start in May. And we would all love for them to start in May, but we understand that there are requirements and regulatory periods and permits and all that kind of stuff. So they are standing at the ready and they will produce the documentation and so forth that we need as a community as quickly as possible. And they would like to start as quickly as possible. Their motivation naturally being that they want to be in business for the 2023 RV season. And so they want to get this project going, you know, as, as quickly as possible. They're self-funded, so they're, you know, they are literally ready to go. The engineers have done a great job of preparing the packet. In fact, the entire application for major subdivision, the next phase is already done and will be presented tomorrow. So they are, assuming we have a, a positive outcome tonight, it will be presented tomorrow. So they're, they want to get going as quickly as they can.
And what's the period of performance for the, the project?
It, it'll be six to 12 months, you know. And parts of it will, will be able to come online sooner. But yeah, it'll, it's a full-year construction schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, from a disclosure point of view, you'd asked about some of the, the other questions. There was another question that we addressed. And the question was how we were going to deal as a project, how we were going to deal with transient or the possibility of a semi-permanent deal as a project, how we were going to deal with transient or the possibility of a semi-permanent housing at the site. Uh, and the, the answer is simple, is that this is a high-end park. It's designed for a very specific clientele, and so the monthly fees, uh, excuse me, the, the nightly fees will be significant and, you know, segregate the population by that fact. And then they will limit, policy-wise, any stay to 30 days or less. And their experience tells them that the typical stay will be four or five days, but this will not be a project that will encourage or allow any type of long-term stays.
Thank you so much for providing that additional information about the Planning Commission meeting. Just two other, hopefully really quick ones. One, I was, uh, wanted to just double-check. I, I, if I recall correctly, when we were discussing the water rate fees last December, there's some sort of lower rate for the Four Mile area. I wanted to make sure that this project doesn't, is not impacted or doesn't fall under that lower rate.
There, there was a lower rate for the golf course, but that's expired. That's the only one that I can think of.
I'm not sure I'm recalling what you're talking about.
Okay. I can talk to you about it all.
Yeah, there, there's different rates for the golf courses, as the mayor mentioned. But, not that I'm recalling.
Okay. Um, I think that there are still some that are in, in effect, but I'm glad to hear that it would not apply to this project, if I'm, if I'm understanding you well.
Yeah, it should be our, our general rates.
Okay.
The, the user has not requested any special consideration. They fully expect to pay the permit fees, the TAP fees and so forth. They, they have not asked for any special consideration. Very likely that they will approach the urban renewal district about opportunities to possibly recover. They're, they're spending significant amounts of money to bring water and sewer 900 feet, you know, so this is a, this is a pretty big deal. So that, that will be part of the future discussion, but they're not asking for any consideration upfront. Relative to the density, there is a financial model that works, you know, with RV parks and density falls into that description. But based on the urging of Public Works Department and City of Canyon City, they will modify the engineering on the project to increase the amount of purvious services. So, uh, and the number that, that they're suggesting is around 40%. So I think that that is a, a significant improvement from, you know, from prior discussions, and that'll be represented in the engineering construction documents that'll be presented. So they have already addressed that. Uh, and just so you know, when you look at that drawing, you see all of the, the light green there that look like the streets, you know, tho- those are not necessarily asphalt or concrete pavement. That is a, um, that is a pervious surface made out of gravel and compacted gravel and so forth. So it is a slightly different than maybe what you're envisioning in your mind. Each site does have a concrete pad, however, for parking of the, of the RV. So there is a combination there. And then all of the perimeter is natural grass. All of those interior islands are all, you know, manicured Kentucky bluegrass. So, you know, they are doing a blend to try to be responsible citizens about how they produce the project, but they certainly want it to be a very attractive amenity for people that want to visit our community and stay there for a few days.
Thank you. My last question was just, when I drove by the, the property to get a better sense of the, the situation, the surrounding environment, the size of the public notice sign, given how far it is from the road, it's, it's not at all legible or understandable what it is. And I'm wondering if in the future, when we know that we have to post it on fences that are so far from the road, if it's possible to make them larger or if it's possible to somehow change that up a bit in the future? Thanks.
Isn't it a standard size?
It, it's a, a uniform size that we have for all public notice signs. If, if we want to regulate their visibility, probably we should have a, some sort of a regulation about a, a maximum setback from a right-of-way.
Um, thank you. That's a great idea.
You had mentioned the landscaping around the perimeter of it, because it is going to be fenced in. It's not going to particularly be super beautiful having an RV park right off of Highway, well, it's not right off of Highway 50, but it is in the area. Is there going to be more to the landscaping around that fencing and around the outside than just natural grasses?
Yeah, there's a, there's a landscaping plan per code. So that, that will be discussed as part of this, uh, this next phase of the project. So I, I don't have the, uh, the tree schedule or whatever committed to memory, but, you know, I did see quite a number of different types of, of, you know, plants and, and trees and, and different types of grasses and so forth.
Okay. So it'll be a little bit more of a, a buffer to make it more appealing aesthetically?
I thi- I think that's accurate. And, and keep in mind that there will be, uh, community commercial property to the north. To the west is actually a natural drainage that will be open space. To the south will be the Travel Plaza and then a, um, one additional Highway 50 retail site. So there, the, there, there will be some buffer, just natural buffer around the project as it's developed.
Okay. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Uh, just, just a comment. Imagine July of 2023, and we have 60 RVs there that either pulled in a trailer with a vehicle or pulled a trailer, pulled a vehicle behind a motorhome. Uh, and it's Saturday night and you want a reserve, and you want to go to Pizza Madness, you better put your reservation in now.
I guess that's a good problem to have.
That's a good problem.
We'll need a lot more restaurants. Um, Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Three additional quick comments or questions. Um, the, the exit at the north part of Lot 1 is, and maybe someone said this and I missed it, could it be made a right-turn-only exit if we think it's an issue about them going back toward County Road 123?
Yeah, the, um, the user is, is amenable to that. So that, that would be acceptable, certainly could add signage or whatever to that, uh, to that effect and, um, you know, what, whatever would be necessary. So they, they would be amenable to that.
Yeah, and I'm not sure from staff's point of view if that would be a requirement or not, but it's something to think about, I think. I did want to say, and I didn't mention earlier, uh, would, I just wonder if there's going to be an attempt to have grasses and vegetation that don't demand too much water out there?
Yeah, if you, the, it's, it's hard to see in this particular plan, you know, because of the, the vantage point, but this dotted area outside will be all natural vegetation that will be, you know, low-water consumption.
Yeah, the Kentucky bluegrass just might be a little bit of a concern, maybe a different kind of gra-. And it's, you know, it's not that we have a requirement around that, I don't think, but.
It should be noted that the site plan for this project has not yet been submitted, and the site plan will need to include a landscape plan, and we are probably going to be encouraging them, to the extent that they do use Kentucky bluegrass, that these be areas where they have their recreational amenities going on principally.
God, thanks. And I guess my third comment, or it's really more of a comment, is I, I do think that this will be a, a major asset for the area and for the city itself. But I think we, we have to think in terms of what the city core may need to do in the present and in the future to help RV drivers actually stop in the middle of town. And we've talked about this a little bit, um, already with staff and among council members, that we, you know, we have the gorge west of town, we'll have this facility on the east side of town. It's still going to be real easy for the hundreds and thousands of RV drivers to just go on through town and not ever see our main street and so forth. But that's something I think the city is going to have to do in the way of finding a way to provide parking for RVs, things like that, signage, other things. So it's not something that this project needs to do, but I just wanted to mention that as a, an ongoing need. And that's all I have.
However they will, it is kind of solving one of our biggest conversations of having a place to park an RV and get in a vehicle and spend four to 30 days in our area. It's wonderful.
If you have a vehicle, if, if your only vehicle, if your only vehicle isn't just the big 40-foot motorhome.
We need to encourage them to have what they call a TOAD, like a T-O-A-D, but it's a, a TOED, T-O-W-E-D vehicle, so they can have access.
And some do.
And maybe for other transportation that would bring them downtown and, and Loves has expressed a great deal of interest in, in making this an amenity for the whole area, and, and they are open to discussions with local, you know, tourism and recreation-type businesses. So I, I'll encourage that on, on your behalf.
Thanks.
So I would also like to just put a little bug in their ear as well. At our meeting two weeks ago with the Chamber of Commerce, it was brought up that, a kiosk for the Chamber of Commerce, maybe at the Travel Plaza, if there was an ability somewhere in that area where visitors are coming in from the east that they can, when they stop, can see all the awesome opportunities for visiting Fremont County and Canyon City and the Royal Gorge and our downtown, just a place to maybe highlight our area would be amazing to be able to, to have that, if that, if that's something that could be amenable or worked out as a partnership.
That, that concept was, was previously discussed, and I ran it by Loves at our weekly meeting, and they're ve- very interested in what that might look like and how to make that work. And one of our concerned citizens has already offered some landscaping and some yard art ideas for it, and so, yeah, that idea is actually gaining some momentum. So I'll, I'll shepherd that through the process.
Okay, thank you. And we do have a citizen's request to address council, so I'd like to take a moment to invite Sean Rogers.
I appreciate it. I think Rob did an excellent job. I appreciate it. And for that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from the council? If a motion is to be made, it would mean the most efficient way would be to, to ask for both Resolution 4 and 5 to be adopted?
Close the public.
If, first, I will close the public. Seeing that there's no more comment, unless there are more comments from the public? Okay, if not, then we will close this. And I'll ask for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we have.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, but Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve Resolutions 4 and 5 Series of 2022.
Second.
Perfect. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the council? Councilmember Smith.
I just have a quick comment. I just wanted to thank Mr. Brown for your presentation. It's very seldom that somebody comes to, uh, city council and wants to spend money without asking for money. So I appreciate that first and foremost. But I really do think this is a great project. I don't see why there should be any concerns. FDIC does a great job. And, and ultimately, since I've been on council, we've been looking for things that are going to dump more tax money into Canyon City. I think this is a great opportunity for everybody. Thank you.
Um, yeah, high five for the red alert button on FDIC's website. So how, we're, thank you for being there and activating your resources and ability to bring in, um, quality investors to our community. It's exciting to have the, the competition for gas prices, the RV park that we've been talking about for a really long time, and ju- and like I said, additional resources and income for our community is wonderful. And also to develop the east side of the community. Hopefully this will kickstart some more development in that Four Mile area. I did have a quick question. I did see in the picture the Four Mile Ranch, the lettering, Four Mile Ranch. Will that be going away?
That will be going away.
It's looking pretty sad.
Yeah, we, we, we will be having conversations with them about potentially doing some other sort of, uh, an identifier sign right there at that intersection, maybe on some retaining wall or something.
Yeah, so even that alone, I'm just already really excited about. Just, I mean, so, that's wonderful. Yeah, no, we're super excited. So, yeah, thank you very much to all of you that had came to support it as well. So seeing no further discussion, I will call for a vote.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Beasley?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Um, both Resolution 4 and 5 have passed, so congratulations for all of your work, and we're excited to help in any way we can to expedite the process for, for Loves. If there's something that we need to pay attention to or make happen a little faster to accommodate them, please let us know. We're happy to do what we need to make that possible.
Thank you.
Uh, we still have another item on the agenda, and that's 8B, introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance 6, Series of 2022, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Designating the Property and Building Located at 305 Main Street, Canyon City, Colorado as a Historic Site." Thank you, Lisa, for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, this is a public hearing.
Lisa, hold on one second. Can you please open the public hearing for a moment? Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, I'm opening the public hearing and now inviting our museum director, Lisa Stutz.
Again, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Uh, this is a public hearing for the designation of the structure located at 305 Main Street as a local historic, uh, structure pursuant to the city's municipal code, Section 1230 and 90. The property is currently occupied by Mrs. B.'s Clock Tower Antiques. It's historically known as Murray's Saloon or Murray's Bullard Hall and Saloon, located at Lot 7 and Block 16 of the original plat of Canyon City. The current property owner is 305 Main LLC. The owner has been notified via mail of this public hearing and a sign has been posted on the property at least 15 days prior to this. The original structure was built circa 1865, uh, 1870, somewhere in between there. The original owner is Bernard Murray, and the architect, builder, and designer are unknown. The structure has not moved from its original location in all those years. Murray's Saloon is a two-story 19th-century commercial structure with Italianate elements. The building style is defined by its flat roof, storefront design, the decorative wide-bracketed cornice molding at the top of the building's fa- front facade, and the three segmented arch windows with ornamental keystone and stone sills. The double-hung windows each have a transom above them. The building also has a storefront cornice with dentals just below the second-floor windows. The central entrance to the building is inset with angled walls leading to the tall double doors. On each side of the entrance are two narrow-painted cast iron columns with decorative capitals and bases, and two large plate-glass display windows with kickplates underneath the cells. The building is originally stone with adobe and a painted brick veneer. Murray's Saloon has seen a few minor changes during its long history. Around 1878, a portico was added across the front of the building but was later removed. An exterior staircase along the east wall of the building is visible in the 1883 census or Sanborn Insurance map, but by 1908, the staircase was likely enclosed and becomes part of the building's footprint. The night, the 1883 Sanborn Insurance map of Canyon City also shows a two-story structure along the alley. To the north of that is connected to the back of the saloon by a one-story 12-foot-wide corridor. A small water closet was added to the corridor by 1895. The two original brick columns that flanked the entrance of the building were eventually replaced with cast iron columns with shaped bases, likely between 1895 and 1905. The original bracketed cornice of the building was also replaced in the early 1900s with a more decorative bracketed cornice with starburst elements, dentals, and corner brackets topped with short finials. The window transom over the central entrance was painted over multiple times. By 1900, the proprietor of the saloon, William Knox, occupied the top floor along with his wife. The saloon's porter also boarded in the building in 1900. Through the decades, the upstairs continued to be either living quarters and/or storage. The current exterior appearance of the building has not altered significantly from the early 1900s with the exception of some paint and occasional awnings. The current owners of the building intend to restore, as needed, the columns on the building's facade. Murray's Bullard- Murray's Billiard Hall and Saloon is one of the oldest commercial buildings still standing in Canyon City, if not the oldest, with only minor historic alterations. The building was built in the mid, late 1860s and exemplifies commercial Italianate architecture from the late 1800s. The saloon is named after Murray, Bernard Murray, who owned and operated the establishment roughly from 1870 to about 1895. Murray was an early seller to Canyon City and served on the town's Board of Trustees in 1873 and 1874. He also was selected to serve as a delegate to the Territorial Convention in 1872. Besides being a saloon, the Billiard Hall on the first floor, the second floor of Murray's Hall served the community as a public meeting space for both social and political affairs. According to an article in the Canyon City Times dated August 1st, 1872, "A General Republican Convention to Nominate County and Precinct Officers" was scheduled for the 17th of August at Murray's Hall. Likewise, Murray Hall, Murray's Hall hosted a town caucus to elect town officers in March of 1877. And in 1874 and 1875, the Fremont County Commission rented the hall for district court proceedings. Judge Moses Hallett was the presiding judge at that time. Judge Moses Hallett became Chief Justice of the Territory of Colorado in 1866 and was reappointed by President Ulysses S. Grant in 1870 and again in 1874. The community, community concerts, theater, and other social events were also held on the second floor of this building. The Canyon City Social Club even hosted a social hop at the hall in January 1874. And according to the Canyon City Times newspaper, and a handbill donated to the Royal Gorge Regional Museum in 1938 advertises a public meeting at the hall for October 8th, 1879. An ad printed in the Brinkley and Hartwell book titled "Southern Colorado: Historical and Descriptive of Fremont and Custer Counties," published in 1879, extols Murray's Billiard Hall and Saloon as the only finest first-class resort in the city, serving the choice's wines, liquors, and cigars. Murray's Hall has also stayed in many secondary sources as being the location of where the town of Canyon City was officially incorporated in April 1872. However, upon extensive research in the museum archives and at the Fremont County Clerk and Recorder's Office, staff has not been able to locate the primary source for that information. The primary sources found consist of articles published in the Canyon City Times for March through April 1872, and the Board of County Commissioners Fremont County Minutes dating from January 1st to June 1st of 1872. Unfortunately, neither source cites the exact location of that meeting. The lack of primary sources, however, regarding the exact location of the town's incorporation should not diminish the historical significance of this property to the, to this community. In 1893, Murray sold the property to Frank Bingley and Robert Lewis. The building continued to function as a saloon under the management of William Knox until 1904. In 1905, the Jockey Club Saloon operated the building for about a year. And from 1908 to the present, the building has functioned as a secondary store, a bicycle repair shop, a grocery store, a cabinet shop, and an appliance store, as well as an antique store, just to name a few. Under these findings of fact, this, the structure meets the criteria for being listed as a historic property. The original building was constructed between 1865 and 1872, making it significantly more than 50 years old. The property was originally owned by a trustee of the town of Canyon City and a Republican delegate for the Colorado Territorial Republican Convention. The property was used as a meeting place for the Town Board of Trustees and as a courtroom for the US District Court and Third Territorial District Court for the Territory of Colorado. And the property was used as a saloon residence, second-hand store, bicycle shop, and grocery store, among many others throughout its time. The property is one of the oldest buildings constructed in Canyon City with the architecture that reflects the commercial Italianate style. As this is a public hearing, staff recommends the historic, recommends the City Council cite these findings as fact, as stated in the staff report and the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, Resolution One, Series 2022, to approve Ordinance Six of Series 2022, designating Murray's Saloon located at 305 Main Street as a lo- local historic property. That conclude, concludes my report. I am happy to answer any questions you may have. And the owner of the property, Brian Bassett, is also here to answer any questions.
Brian, would you like to address council?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, what can I say? If you haven't already been made aware of the relevance between the Loves' travel stop, the Murray's Hall was the original Loves in town to all the minors and everybody else that traveled through town.
I like it.
I think it's rather significant. Um, anyway, we, we like having the building. We've had it for, huh, about, since 2005? We've actually owned it since about 2008, but we've occupied it since about 2005. Um, we continue to do upgrades on it and maintain it. Electrical, plumbing, all that stuff's been done. It obviously meets all code. We have three very successful Airbnb units in the upper part of the building. They're always full. They have been for about five years now. And, uh, that brings people downtown. They love the historical nature of it, the location of it. Um, and it's very active. Uh, my wife's antique store occupies the main floor. Uh, that's been there since 2006, uh, and has, is probably one of the oldest non-food establishments downtown that there is. That's been consistently in business through hook or crook. So, um, brings a lot of people in from the train, you know, gives them a reason to come downtown. We're right there on that corner. That's why I kind of invested in that end of downtown. Um, I not only have this building, I have the Charter Table TV building on 402 Main as well. Uh, so we've, uh, really kind of have a anchor in town. We like, uh, we like doing what we do. So we like investing. You know, I'm also a member of the Emergent Campus out at Florence, so I like the historical nature of this town. I have, I moved to Canyon some years ago and realized I couldn't swing a cat without hitting a relative down here. So I have family that's been here forever and ever, so it's a kind of a neat place, so. And the title loves too. I'm an oaky and I drive a 40-foot motorhome a lot in the summer, so I know all those things too. So I like what it can bring to this community. So it's been an interesting evening for me.
So Brian, what, um, what was your motivation to apply for historic?
Well, you know, I had always thought it was part of the contiguous plan of downtown till somebody said, "Hey, you're not part of the contiguous plan downtown." 2004, obviously, they couldn't find a link to make it so. And with Lisa's help and determination, she stayed on me because I'm, I'm relatively busy. And, uh, I finally got back to her and I was like, "We need to make this happen with the sequen- how do you say it? Sequen- Centennial thing." It's going on this year since, uh, it's widely acknowledged, though not proven, that it is where Canyon City became Canyon City in 1872. Um, there's multiple documents that attest to that fact, and finding the primary source eludes us, but we continue to look, as well as some documents regarding Moses Hallett's Railroad Treaty, uh, in the US nature and that, that kind of thing. So the, the building has crazy historical significance for the city. So it's, uh, one of those things we're kind of happy to be a part of. And, and the, the, the caretakers for the time being, so.
Yeah, that's wonderful. We're excited to have you join the historic group. I did notice in a letter back in 1994, it talked about how the upstairs windows are single-hung now, and they used to be four-over-fours, and that way back then it was saying that things, that altered appearance might need to be addressed. Is that something that would need to be addressed?
That's minor.
Okay.
Yeah, that's very minor. And depending on when that was done, it could be historic now.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Bassett?
Just a comment. I'll bet you wish you had found one of those 1925 motorcycles in the back room.
That would have been nice. Well, the back part, the two-story stone building on the alley end is the original Ice House in town, too. So it's, it's kind of got its own little significance.
So we're having a ghost walk tour in June. Do you have any ghosts that need to be highlighted?
You know, and I'm also a person that actually lived in the St. Cloud for two years in 98. And while I was here for Y2K, working with Fremont Bank. And, uh, yeah, ghosts are significant all through downtown. My wife tells me all the time, and we've had guests upstairs that say they, you know, strange things happened and so forth, so. We, we don't particularly push that aspect of it, but, but it is kind of cool.
Awesome. All right. Anything else that we need to add? If not, then let's get a motion on the table. First, I need to ask if there's any public comment. Seeing none, I will close this public hearing and ask for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, um, Ordinance Six of Series 2022.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote, please.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Awesome. That has passed unanimously. Congratulations. And thank you, Lisa, for your work on this as well. Excellent, excellent work as always. It is time for us to move into an executive session. I'll turn the time over to Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick to get us into that.
Just a question before we move. Do we have to approve the resolution as well as the ordinance?
That was their resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hmm, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I move that the City Council enter into execu- executive sessions for the following purposes. An executive session to consider personal matters regarding the city administrator's evaluation process pursuant to CRS 24-6, 6-4024F.
Is there a motion? Oh, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.